Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Role.
Alderman Cassoon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Jean Francois.
Here.
Sid.
Here.
Witt.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Correspondents.
Tonight we have the correspondence from the Department of Environmental Conservation on notice of violation for the Miami'sburg development.
Received and filed.
We have a letter from the New Beginnings Church that is requesting permission to use the parking lots on Canal Street and Mulberry Street for a community festival on Saturday, August 5th.
Over to DPW.
And we also have a letter from Sean Patrick Maloney on the FMA, I'm sorry, FEMA may be of assistance to the public.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, tonight we have a presentation by M&amp;R Energy.
Michael, before Melissa gets started, as you know, M&amp;R is our energy provider. And Melissa's here to outline the next possible renewal of the contract. And timing is everything with this. And so after the presentation, it may make sense for us to do a renewal from the floor tonight because this industry changes, I think, on a daily basis. But I think there are some price possible savings in here, which she'll explain if we do something tonight. But it's your call.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, everybody. So the city of Middletown, you're currently under gas-electric contract until December of 2017. So what we do is we keep an eye on the markets. As Joe said, they change all the time. So we're watching, looking for an opportunity when the price is at a point where it's lower than where you've been in order to lock in, secure some savings for the city of Middletown. So what I put out in front of you here is a summary of where you are today and what the bids look like from various electric suppliers that have come in. All these bids came in today. What I do is I test the market throughout the last four or five months to see when there's been an opportunity to lock in at a lower rate. So I met with Joe two weeks ago, and the market is in a position where you are saving. So right now, you're in the current contract, you'll see, and the fourth line down is at 6.6 cents per kilowatt hour for electricity. What we're, and the Orange Rockland's average rate's been 7.1 and going up. So your savings even against the Orange Rockland's been significant. So what we're looking at when we run the bids is the lowest bidder, and this is if we choose to go out 36 months, is at a rate of .0609, or an annual savings of $34,000 for the city of Middletown from where you are right now. Now, so the next chart is just basically showing you who the bidders were, where they bid, et cetera. Then you go down to the bottom of the page into electric price history. So since we've been managing the energy pricing for you since 2010, it shows you where this price is falling compared to historically where you have bought. The only time you've bought cheaper than this six cents was in 2012 to 2013, sorry, yeah, 2012 to 2013 at 5.8. Brief period at 5.7, but since then, you've been at 6.5, then you went up to 6.6, and now you're looking at a rate of .0609 through 2020. So you are looking to go out for three years. So there's some kind of peace of mind knowing that you're locking in a commodity cheaper than where you've been, say, by the time you get out to 2020, seven years prior. So it's in your favor to do that. Now, in addition to what I've shown you on the front, there's a second page. I do want to make you guys aware that the governor has a goal of 50% green by 2030. So the second sheet explains to you a little bit about that goal of 50% green renewable power by 2030. So what that's going to mean is certainly significantly more green projects going on in New York State. It also means that under this clean energy standard, they are passing on additional charges to every consumer in the state of New York. City of Middletown, even though, and any customer, even though you have a fixed rate, every supplier has what's called a change in law clause for just this kind of an event, meaning it's beyond their control. It's the governor, it's federal, it could be Public Service Commission of New York, it could be Orange Rockland Utilities. So it's called a change, so it falls under the change in law clause, which means although you're paying 6.6 cents now, you are going to have an adder on that starting in April. The two components are, one, the zero emissions credit. That is a fee that's being charged to every consumer in New York starting in April, and it's basically a seven, it's a collection of $7.6 billion over the next 12 years to subsidize nuclear plants in upstate New York. So it is, it's nothing, it's being fought, but as of right now, it's going forward. People are starting, consumers are starting to see it. You're seeing it in your home, you're seeing it in your business, you're seeing it at the municipality. So that charge will be added on to what you're currently paying. The second is a renewable energy standard. That's explained there as well. That started in January of 2017, and that's basically for having suppliers go out and buy renewable energy credits in the event that there aren't local renewable energy products they can buy from. So the two are explained there. So when we look at our $34,000 of savings, that is the real savings over where you are now because you're paying 6.6 plus these new charges, you're going to be paying .060 plus these new charges. So it's basically a wash. The one, there's, when you go down our first chart where it says ZEC and RPS, those are projected costs of what it's going to cost the city of Middletown each year, in addition to what you're already paying now and then what you're going to pay in the future. So it's going to be substantial. Over the next 12 months, it'll be basically $20,000 a year, and it goes up thereafter. So over the three-year period, it's going to be, really, when you look at it now, the 6.6, .6109, if we take 36-month contract, when we look at over 36 months, it's going to cost you about $23,000 a year. So, and it goes up thereafter. It's going up every year for the next 12 years. Unless, there are, there are some courts, there are some opposition to it that have gone to the court. There hasn't been any kind of final ruling, but as of right now, this is what is coming into play. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, too. Your savings are coming down, I mean, your commodity cost itself is going down, but these new charges are going to make your budget look like it's a little bit higher. Any questions?
Questions?
Are we happy or sad? Well, depends on what you think about green power. So if you like green power, you're happy, but, but it does mean more for the consumer at this time. Yes, but we're happy about the commodity rates, yes. The fact that we're, you know, at this rate of just over 6 cents a kilowatt hour, and we haven't been that low since 2012, 2013, yes, we're very happy with the commodity rate itself. Yes. So as Joe mentioned, these change all the time. If you do not vote on it tonight, then we will refresh when you guys are ready to vote on it. So as Joe says, it changes daily. Sometimes it changes throughout the day. So it's that.
If there's no questions, I'll ask Alderman Massey to do a resolution off the floor today. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for the good of the city would like to address this council, please step forward. You have four minutes to address this council for the good of the city.
During the last council meeting, I requested to be able to use PowerPoint as my preferred form of communication to the council for my four minutes for the good of the city. With PowerPoint, we're able to transfer information more efficiently because the data and math will be readily available. But also PowerPoint adds more accessibility to those hard of hearing, considering I also have a strong accent. But instead, I was told to respect the process, or we might get to a point where the council will shut down public broadcasting on Channel 20. Is this process what you call a democracy, threatening the free flow of information just because it doesn't fit the establishment narrative? If money is a form of speech protected by the First Amendment, then shouldn't PowerPoint be also? I mean, this is New York, after all, the most corrupt state in this great nation. By reviewing the last 10 years of Middletown, we see the swamp is deep here also. In the last few weeks, we saw the amount of earmarks conveniently increase dramatically just in time for elections. While Middletown is charging us a second time for a courthouse, we have a mayor who was found guilty of corruption and overturned by appellate court over a technicality.
I'm going to stop you.
That's enough.
I'm going to stop you. I've told you plenty of times, I have met with you, I've told you plenty of times, it's for the good of the city.
This is for the good of the city.
You're making it political.
Political just because it doesn't fit your establishment narrative?
For the good of the city.
Tornative facts, is that what you're saying?
For the good of the city, you're going to address the council.
I am addressing the council for the good of the city.
You continue, I'm going to rule you out of order, and I'll have the gentleman in the back to remove you. Plain and simple. For the good of the city.
In the past elections, a young Democrat beat the Republican Joe Massey, but the young Republican had to resign because apparently only the front side of his house was in Middletown, even though his house had a Middletown address. Someone didn't draw the lines fairly in the map, and instead of the mayor fighting for him in court, he appointed someone from the opposite party. I wish I was surprised, but when the mayor gave himself a 96% raise, and when the council gave themselves 100% raise, not including council president, it's hard to be surprised. A full-time public servant should have the salary of that of our police officers. I understand the concerns of the council, but the threat from the council goes against the First Amendment on a number of different counts. I said this isn't business as usual. Those aren't your cameras, those are our cameras. This isn't your America, this is our America. So I ask again, can we use PowerPoint during the next meeting for our four minutes?
Anyone else would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Susan DePue, elevator 57, Prospect Street. I'd like to thank the mayor, members of the common council, Commissioner Toewill, members of the Pride Committee, John Namchek, and most importantly, the 350 or more people who joined forces on April 22nd to help bring Middletown back to the way that they wanted it to be. As most of you know, the widespread movement to have litter, a litter-free city began with volunteers. As the saying goes, it takes a community to bring success to an event, and I'd like to thank the neon grieve wave of people who made such an impact on Middletown. And if I've omitted any names, I apologize, but I'd like to thank the group of people, Middletown High School NJROTC, Mayor's Youth Council, Girl Scout Troop 239, Faithiana Academy, Middletown Professional Firefighters of America, Middletown Lions Club, Turo College, Thrall Library, Young Warriors Boxing Team, YMCA Middletown, Maple Hill Elementary, National Elementary Honors Society, Twin Towers Middle School National Junior Honor Society, who cleaned up around their school on Friday, the day before our event, Middletown High School National Honor Society, Middletown Teachers Association members, Barracuda Swim Club, Monhagen National Junior Honor Society, Middletown High School Football Team, Presidential Park National Elementary Honor Society, Carter Elementary School National Elementary Honor Society, Middletown Cares Kelly Ocasio, Downtown Business Improvement District John Degnan and Maria Bruni, Alderman, Ram Cassoon, Witt, Jean Francois, Kleiner and Massey, Commissioner Public Works Jacob Toewill, Parks and Rec Set Up and Cleanup Crew, City Hall Employees Caitlin McNamara, Don Paris, Karen Cisco and Lori Graziano, Superintendent of Rec Chris Brinkerhoff, John Namchek, City Clerk Shop Right Supermarkets, Dan Higby from Middletown Transit for the buses and drivers, all the companies who gave donations, and the people whose names I have not announced, but who came from as far as Goshen, Circleville and Johnson to help the people in Middletown bring back the pride to Middletown. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address this council?
I'm Celeste Van Fleet, and I want to congratulate Sue DePue, DePue, I think it was, and in keeping with what she has had to say, I would like to say that I am interested in beautification of the city. I'm tired of looking at the debris everywhere, and I'm also interested in the environmental situation that we're in, and that I think, I've been on the tree committee, and I think we're going to have that discussion later. But I want to recommend that the city, consider with all this money that people are lavishing on us, that we set aside a considerable amount of money and perhaps even contemplate hiring a professional arborist for the city on a regular basis, on a permanent basis, to correct some of these deficiencies we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, Mark, the Department Heads, Economic Development.
Sir, why, sir, why are you leaving? I'm sorry, Maria, for interrupting, but he does that every meeting and then runs out. I'd like to go get him, but.
Good evening, everyone. I personally want to thank Sue. Remarkable person. She stepped up and, you know, everybody working together for the Pride Committee, and again, thank you, Sue. It was a great, great event, as, as always. The long-awaited summer concert series list is out, so hot off the press. It's on our website, the bid website. It was in the water bills today as well, the listings. So we're looking forward to everything beginning in a few weeks. Also, the Paramount, there's a few local shows coming up. Orange Regional Medical Center has a talent show. Tickets are on sale now. There's an eight, the 845 award show coming up. Tickets are on sale as well. So there's a lot happening in the arts and entertainment for, for our city. I have a couple resolutions on the agenda this evening. One is for the professional services for Hudson Valley Patterns for Progress. As you're aware, they've been involved with economic development with us for their services and reports and so forth. So there's a resolution to have the mayor sign the agreement, and also for the mayor to sign all the agreements regarding the summer concerts, the Stars and Stripes, and the Latino Festival that's coming up in June. So that's all I have for this evening.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Sue DePue, thank you so much for everything you do for the city. The bulk pickup continues, spring cleanup in the city of Middletown. We're doing the second ward now. We finished the third ward, ward last week, and we have the first and fourth remaining for the following two weeks. Fire hydrant flushing, just again, please be careful when you do any laundry because we are flushing the water system, and you would expect some discoloration of the water when we are flushing in your immediate area. Please check the water before you do any laundry. And, you know, sometimes our flushing does get delays because, delayed because like yesterday into last night, we had two water main breaks in Lincoln Terrace. So obviously, the guys will have to stay and do the repairs, and that will, the next day, they will be, obviously, they probably not show up to work because they worked all night. So the flushing of the system will be delayed somewhat. But we're, we're trying to pursue the flushing as much as, as fast as we can. We have, the first and fourth ward will be starting this week with the water system flushing. CPV has finished paving Dawson Avenue, half of Dawson Avenue for us. That was the contract, that was their requirement because they installed the gray water sewer line and the, and the return cooling water line to the sewage treatment plant, so they did fulfill their obligation. And the, so, thank God, that's a very busy intersection, and that's completed. Also, another important notice, which is the DOT, New York State DOT, they will start replacing, they will, they have been working for about a couple of years now on a culvert replacement project on 211 West by Pilgrim's Estate, just outside the city of Middletown line. So the detour will take place, will start, they're gonna, they're gonna shut that road down, Route 211, and they're gonna close it down on May 12. And they expect the work to be completed within a couple of weeks, approximately. So we will have, we, DOT already has electronic signs ready to be fired up and detour signs and everything like that. They've been situated. We went over the plan with them. The project itself is in the town of Wallkill. They have done some work for us, the DOT, to install 20-inch water line for us as a future bypass whenever we decide to replace these old water mains. So we have a new section that DOT has installed for us. And with that, if you have any questions for me?
Any question for the Commissioner? Alderman, Jean Francois?
Commissioner, as the chairman of Public Works, I know we have communication throughout the day, you and I, and President Rodriguez. Can you kind of adjust the console about Miami'sburg project?
Yeah, Miami'sburg, we're going, we're going back and forth with them. As you know, the DEC has written a letter of violation to them. They went down on March 31st. They only sent us the letter of violation for the developer, and I believe April, April 18th. And so we checked our records there because our building inspector and the developer, the engineer for the developer do their own inspection, building inspector in behalf of the city, the other professional engineer in behalf of the developer, but he has to certify that all measures have been implemented for water, for storm water management. So we went back in there, and we knew that our code enforcement, our building inspector was there April 3rd to inspect the site, which is basically, the DEC was there on Friday, March 31st. Our building inspector was there following Monday. So was the project engineer, the professional engineer who is supposed to report to us on a regular basis about the implementation of the soil erosion and the storm water pollution prevention management plan. Both reports in there, they say that the contractor did comply with what was noted as deficiency in the DEC report, which is very good news. However, we had some on, we issued our own letter of violation to him because of certain things in there. One important item is he disturbed more than five acres, which he should not have done that. The general permit, as issued by the DEC and by the city, to him, he's riding on our permit, does not allow him to disturb more than five, five acres. So he went now, and he stabilized the whole site, putting seed and vegetation, and to try to, the vegetation actually started taking off in there, which is a very good sign. So, you know, we're watching him. I got, like I reported to you in last meeting, and you and I discussed several times, we have the deputy commissioner now, Chris Gross, he's going there on a regular basis, not only the building inspector issuing his own report. We're going to take them unfortunately to court because of the more than five acre disturbance that they have done. And, you know, whenever, if, we're going to keep watching them, if they go left or right, if they, if they divert from what is required, we're going to be on them, we're going to impose penalties. If we have to, like I said, we'll shut down the project. The DEC has sent us a letter, like you've seen in there, it was the first one in the correspondence, from John Namchek, saying that the DEC, the city basically is in violation. Well, we're in violation because we are in charge of, in charge of implementing, as an MS4 community, in charge of implementing all the storm water management and, and soil erosion minimization requirement. And so that's why. So we will be responding to the DEC. The country, the developer has already responded to the DEC, and I think I sent you guys a copy of that correspondence, I think everybody on the council, and the mayor. So, you know, we've been through down this road before with another, with some other projects in there. You know, obviously, we cannot be there 24 hours a day. Developer is saying somebody pulled the silt fence because it was inspected the day before, it was inspected the day after, and, you know, and just when the DEC came in, silt fence was pulled in there. Saying somebody, somebody pulled it. Their record-keeping in there, they're supposed to do all the inspection reports from the professional engineer on-site, available for inspection, along with the storm water management plan itself that was approved by the city and by the DEC. And he did not because he said somebody keeps taking the reports from the mailbox, and they keep getting missing. So the DEC, he said, gave him permission to keep it on his pickup truck until, until there is a trailer, construction trailer at the site, or there's a model in there. So there's someplace permanent where they can keep these records. So we're waiting, I told him to give us confirmation from the DEC that the DEC has approved that for him. So I don't want to keep going on and on and on, but, you know.
Thank you.
That's what we.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Commissioner, I know probably people watching this know enough not to do it, but I still keep seeing TVs on the curbs.
Yes, thank you.
Bulk pickup, some huge TVs. So just trying once again, if anybody doesn't know and just happens to be listening, you can't put electronics out for bulk pickup, so I'm sure that's been an issue. The other thing is, Kevin and I had one question from a constituent about where, we know with the sidewalks and the intersections and the sidewalk improvements going out from the intersections, but now, there is additional money for sidewalks? Do we know which sidewalks we're going to be doing with the additional money?
Yes, yes. Those have been identified, the additional, you're talking about $2.1 million grant from the earmarks that other communities did not use. I think the mayor was going to talk about it. But those, those sidewalks have been identified, yes, to the DOT, and, and we can go over them. It's around Thrall Park, around Grove Street, Dawson Avenue in there, where we don't have any sidewalks in there, and people, they have a goat path in there. That's gonna get some sidewalk, and North Street, some places on North Street. Of course, that will complement the other traffic, traffic control operation project that we have, which is the intersections. And Wickham Avenue, yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, the mayor just reminded me, Wickham Avenue, too, which is, you know, by Thrall Park and across the street.
Okay, I think this was somebody from Columbia, but I didn't think it was any of the streets off of Lake or that area.
No, it doesn't go that far.
Okay.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On Dawson Avenue, are we doing both sides of the street?
No, just one side.
Just one side?
Because the money just, you know, you're talking about $2.1 million plus 20% matching from the city. You're talking about almost $2.6 million in there, but it doesn't go that far. We wanted to do like 20,000 linear feet of curbs and sidewalks, and the DOT, they feel because of the new bids right now that they're receiving, the unit prices, we can only do 10,000 linear feet. So it's, things are getting to be very, very expensive.
Thank you.
And if I may, just to follow up with Alderman Kleiner, I think you, the council and the mayor are going to set up some electronic collection date later on. So we're going to do like we did last year. Otherwise, Orange County Transfer Station in New Hampton, it's open to accept electronics.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Fire Chief?
Evening, everybody. Just a reminder, May 13th is our annual dinner. I believe everybody's been invited to. And just a reminder, September 9th is the parade this year. Just another reminder.
Fire Chief? Alderman Kleiner?
Sorry, but this, this came up at Neighborhood Watch in our constituents' meeting, too. How are we doing with volunteers this year?
This year is not as good as the years ap- This year is, uh, not as good as the years past, although we've taken in, I think, three so far this year alone. Um, I think last year was, I wanna say twenty-eight, something like that, so, um, we have, uh, recruitment, um, was, around the county is, uh, just this past week, and then we have our, um, fire prevention, which always helps us out, and that's in October, plus we do, uh, all the community events and our recruiting forces there as well, so.
Okay, we'll keep getting the word out, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. Corporation Council?
Any questions?
Any question for the Corporation Council? Thank you. City Clerk?
Wanted to say thank you, Sue, for a great job, again, even with the aclement weather, we still had many people show up for the event, and it was very successful. Also, May twenty-ninth is the Memorial Day Parade, please check the website for any street closings for that, this year it starts at Thrall and goes to Wallkill. Also, the Ruthie Run, which is in June, that's another road closer, so please check the website, now that the weather's getting nice, all these events are starting to happen, and I've been updating them on the website so people can see what roads will be closed. That's all I have for this year.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings and grievances?
Tonight, we have a public hearing for rezoning parcels from C-two limited businesses to one, uh, one, I'm sorry, I-one A light industrial general business districts, and I'll read the public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May second, on or as near eight p.m. as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, sixteen James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment to chapter four seventy-five dash twenty-three, zoning to change from C-two limited business to I-one A light industrial general business districts, and the addresses are all listed, I won't read them all, and that any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning amendments. The complete proposed amendments to the code are available in the office of the City Clerk, uh, City Hall, sixteen James Street, room twelve. This, uh, was signed by John Namchek, clerk of the Common Council, this was published in the newspaper on April twenty-fourth and April twenty-fifth and on the city website, and also my office did mailings to all the property owners for the addresses that are gonna be affected.
At that, this time, the public hearing is now open?
Hi, uh, since the request came through my office, um, I felt it was important to, um, A, explain the, uh, the request, the reason behind it, and also the news article today in the paper. First, the, um, the zoning that we're, we're changing it to is from C-two, which is limited business, to, um, I-one A, which is light industrial general business districts, that's the same, uh, zoning that we created for the psychiatric center. Uh, they're similar in many, many ways, except for the I-one A does not allow residential zoning, the C-two does allow residential zoning. The reason, um, the property is also contiguous to an I-two zone, and as you go down Bennett Street, the, the, uh, the proposed cheese factory that's, um, will be appearing in front of the planning board would be relocating or locating down there. Um, you'll see that there's a, a junkyard down off to the left, and there are some other property that's not really suitable for commercial, or for residential development. So, we're trying to generate some tax ratables, and also there is a, um, a, a building there that used to be the old Montessori school. Uh, so, the property owners were all contacted, um, some did give some feedback and were concerned. Uh, one concern was that the I-one A zoning, um, and that wasn't a concern from the, um, from the property owners, it was a concern from, uh, at least one or two members of council, allows for buildings up to six stories high. And the reason for that is that, first of all, there would not be an industrial building that would be up to six stories high. Um, I think the only pro, two properties that would be eligible to do that would be the Gerda property at forty-one Dawson and the old supermarket next door to that, and I would think that an office building, if we wanted to have an office building locate on multiple stories, that Dawson Avenue would be the area that we would want a higher density or multiple floor, uh, zoning. Uh, but the factory that we're proposing to go in there is, um, a single-story project, uh, project. You have met the owners in a previous, uh, meeting when they were looking at relocating in, in a different part of the city. I did get one email today regarding the cheese factory and whether, you know, some environmental concerns. So, I, although I'm not allowed to identify the, um, the company at this point, because obviously, um, when they go to their planning board application, it will be public, but they've requested that it not be public at this time. But we felt it was the, um, after looking at it with our attorney and our Economic Development Office, that the change from I-one, uh, from C-two to I-one A would be suitable for that area regardless if the cheese factory came in or not. It makes it more marketable, um, if, um, the property in the rear section, and, um, it's really low-impact uses. Uh, the products are, from this specific company, is a Greek-style cheese, a feta cheese, a goat cheese, and regatta, um, it's made from both regular milk and organic milk. The job creation in year one is seventeen, up to year five, which would be fifty employees. Um, they do, do, deal with local farms, and, um, and, uh, they presented to us the calculations on how many gallons of milk per cow per, per day or that are needed for this, but, uh, the most important part of their, um, of the concerns that we raised when they were looking at another location was emissions, whether this is gonna be an odor-producing, um, facility, and that is an absolute no. Um, and the other was the waste, how would the waste be controlled? If you know that, um, you, if you go online, you'll see something about cheese factories, and, and we'll control this at the planning board, is that sometimes they do have open pits, and you generate odors out of those open pits where they store the, um, the waste. Um, that will not be the case, and we've advised the owner, and he's advised us, that he would not be doing that. Um, so, we have to make sure that's in the approval, uh, through the planning board, but they would be using the tankers of the byproduct, um, they put it back into tankers, and then they use it for some kind of, uh, of, uh, animal, animal, uh, food, um, if you remember the process, so. So, they have, they have different ways of controlling the waste management, one being, as I said, the, the pit, the other is, uh, chemical methods, which we're not really, um, up on, uh, either, but the most, um, appealing one was the trucking it away. So, as we get into the project itself, those are gonna be requirements that we will insist upon from the cheese manufacturer. But as for the zoning itself, Jacob did a SECR, um, most of the property is occupied already, there are buildings on them, so it's very basic stuff. Um, the rear of Bennett Street is where this would be located, limited traffic, I think one or two tankers a week to begin with, with a maximum of, um, I can't really read it, um. I think it was a maximum of three per week, even at their high point, uh, the number's too small here, but, but the, uh, water needs are not heavy, um, they're about twenty-five-hundred gallons a day, um, as they get into, um, uh, their heavier usage, uh, so, it's, it's a good project, it's a clean project, but the zoning change is not dependent upon this project. We think it's the best, and, uh, the best use would be for the I-one A, which allows for other things, uh, assembling, uh, wood products, um, and it moves away from the housing and light commercial side, so. Any questions, I mean?
Any questions? Waldman John Francois?
Yes, are they tapping to, uh, our water system?
Yes, yes, there'll be a water user and a sewer user, but the waste generated would be in tankers from the, from the process, would be tanked out, would be shipped out in tankers.
Okay, thank you. Waldman Kleiner?
Uh, thank you, I was gonna ask the Commissioner if I could, just, uh, to comment on the SECR form a little bit.
Sure, certainly.
I, I do know, you know, we have Monhegan Brook going by behind there, and you identify some wetlands, but you don't find, you know, there's anything else in the I-one A zone that would be a problem for that area.
No, uh, yeah, I, I really.
Because the resolution says the council has carefully reviewed the SECR.
Well, the resolution was written by the, uh, Corporation Council, I, I don't try the resolution, but this is done, this is, or Assistant Corporation Council in this case, not, not, it's Alex, communication between Alex and I, we, where we came up with this. Remember, this SECR is not only for, has nothing to do with the cheese factory, whatever, uh, whatever entity comes in, like the mayor said.
Yes.
Uh, just, uh, you know, any, anything that would be proposed for that location will gonna, is gonna be presented to the common, to the Board of, um, I'm sorry, Planning Board, and is gonna withstand the scrutiny of the Planning Board and engineering and, and, and all kinds of environmental issues that will be, have to be addressed. So, I think this is very much suitable, yes, and that's why we wrote the SECR, of course, part of it is gonna be in the floodplain and so on and so forth, back in the back of the properties, and that's all identified in the SECR that, that we did. But it's not project-specific, this SECR, it's anything you can do in that.
That's my concern, thank you.
Yeah, Jerry, I just wanna point out that what's contiguous to the property is I-two.
Right.
That's the current zoning from, along the Monhegan Creek, from the back of, uh, from Dawson as it pushes towards Janon, all the way out of town, uh, so, the, we're actually, we're, we're actually, uh, an I-two zone, uh, you can have automobile painting, rebuilding, reconditioning, um, uh, neon sign construction and things of that nature, we're trying to get away from that. I-one A will not allow any of those types of uses. So, our, we had a choice to go to I-two, I didn't wanna go to I-two because of, would, um, address some of the issues that you're just raising.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the public would like to address council on a public hearing? And just for the records, the Assistant Corporation Council, our Corporation Council had to abstain due to a conflict. Any board member have any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to close? Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Remarks of the Mayor?
I'd like to join the chorus of thank yous to Sue and, um, all of the volunteers that organized, and also all the people that participated, um, especially the students, um, I believe we had three hundred-plus students, and that we gave out the letters of, um, of certifying that the volunteering time, so I think three hundred students showing up, um, plus is really a significant, uh, positive for the community and the youth of our community, and showing that positive things can be done, and I was also happy that the Times-South Record finally covered the story and gave it its, uh, uh, proper coverage, because, uh, they needed to be recognized, and I think Sue also, I know she doesn't do it for recognition, but, uh, she really, um, has made a difference in the past seven years in our community, and, and hopefully she's gonna keep this thing going. Uh, but really, it was a tremendous turnout, and I know Mr. Massey and our council president were, uh, cleaning up the Heritage Trail, the proposed Heritage Trail, which I know Jerry's been, uh, asking some questions about, and I'm sure I'll get into that with him, but, um, it was really impressive, oppressive day, impressive event, uh, and then backed up with the Little League Parade, which I was unable to attend, I apologize, with my grandson's birthday, but I understand we had a pretty respectable turnout, and the turnout from the Little League was great, and they changed the route down Watkins Avenue, older woman Ram Cassoon advised me that it was a, uh, much more comfortable march down to, from the Elks Club, thank you to the Elks Club once again for hosting, and, um, and all of those who make the Little League happen, a big thank you to them also. Um, the sidewalk issue that was touched upon was, um, one of the questions, I think, from either Alderman Kleiner or, or Alderman Witt, Kevin Witt did call me today also about that, and it's a little confusing because the money doesn't exactly match up, um, about, from the story today, is that's just where they took some of the money. But it, Jacob's correct, that it's part of that two-point-one and change million plus our twenty percent local match. Um, we have identified in the grant application, uh, Wickham Grove, uh, around Thrall Park, a small section, I believe, of railroad, uh, we're doing Dawson on the Playtag side of Dawson where there is the goat path, and, uh, we're looking at other parts of the city. The grant's basically focusing on high pedestrian areas. Last meeting, I mentioned the sidewalk program that we're, are, we're gonna be presenting, uh, to the council, and there's some even better news on that, is that, um, we were first talking about a thousand-dollar grant, matching grant, uh, for sidewalks. Uh, Maria Bruni and her staff have, uh, been developing the program and looking at HUD regs, and it appears we can probably do the program through her, uh, department, but also the people who are grant-eligible would be eligible for more than a thousand dollars. So, possibly, you know, if we can inject at some point, uh, we're looking to start with fifty thousand dollars from her program, and hopefully start injecting some city funds into that program, um, I, I think we can really make a difference over the next couple of years on sidewalks. Many people are getting violated by their insurance companies to make corrections, and I'm sure that's what the lady on Columbia Avenue was probably interested in. So, this program will be accessible to homeowners only, and will be, um, income-based, but, uh, the income guidelines, I think for a family of four, Maria, were what, forty, forty-eight? Was it, something like that? Close to fifty thousand, she doesn't know, Patty knows. I put her on the spot, Patty knows, uh, but, um, it's significant, but if they're not, uh, covered for the whole grant, there is a sliding scale too, so, um, it'll, it'll be, um, a program that we've talked about for a couple of years, but I think it's necessary, um, that we do it. The chief of police advised me the first thing this morning that his wife and, uh, he went for a walk throughout the city with his wife, and he was, uh, very concerned about the condition of the sidewalk, so, he thinks we should be doing this, I told him he should have watched the last meeting, and he would know that we were doing it, but, but that's his, um, his issue, but, um, on May fifteenth, you all received, uh, letters regarding the, uh, proposed, uh, presentation of the, uh, final acceptance of the downtown revitalization initiative, ten million dollar grant spending plan, and, um, we have and are inviting, uh, people from all over the county, and residents of the city also, and business owners in the city, and realtors, we're hoping for a good turnout, it'll be held at the Paramount Theater, and, uh, to make the final presentation. The only thing that might hold this up or change this is that we were notified by the governor's office is that they're trying to expedite the processing of the applications from June until sometime in May. So, if they finalize the plan, um, and identify which project's gonna be funded, then obviously this'll change from a proposed to an actual, uh, which will be actually better for us, so, uh, we're, we're trying to, um, get more information out of that, but the, it's, it's impressive, and combined with all of the other grant monies that we're receiving, um, will certainly make a big difference. Uh, we closed on Friday on the court, the two-point-seven million dollars, um, um, the two-point-two was the purchase, it's the court in the building next to it and the property. As you know, um, five hundred thousand is towards the renovation with an additional six hundred thousand plus commitment from the city of Middletown. We will be, uh, interviewing and hiring architects in the near, in the near future, and working with the Office of Court Administration to make this project, um, a go, and at the same time, expanding the police station, um, office space that's necessary, so. I believe I've covered all of, I wanted to cover, um, if you have any questions, I certainly will address them. Mr. Kleiner?
Yes, I've had a couple of questions on the Heritage Trail, I know they've had some clearing, but people have asked if there are any other updates.
Yes, there are, May eighth, there will be a meeting that we, the city has been invited to, primarily Jacob, because it's a meeting of the engineers, um, I won't be attending, I'll be at NICOM, but, um, I don't know if I could contribute much there anyway, uh, with a meeting of the engineers. So, um, they will be, um, giving whatever preliminary layouts that they have, their plans for coming into East Main Street, we are still working with them on crossing East Main Street, on the preferable crossing, but our focus right now is East Main to Goshen, and, uh, that will be, uh, Jacob said he's been in contact with them, and he will have a, an update for you at the next Common Council meeting.
Thank you.
Waldman Cassoon?
Not to beat a dead horse, but the West Main project.
Yes.
We've got the Army Corps of Engineers permits, we've done the SECR, I'm just wondering if there is any movement forward from that point.
Um, we, our engineers, CPL, submitted what we hope is the final documentation that is necessary today. I recent, I received a copy of the email today, I, I don't know if they submitted it yesterday or not, but I did get a copy of the submission today, and we're hoping that the award letter will be forthcoming shortly, and Jacob can probably give you an update on how we proceed from then, but, but from there, but, um, my understanding is now fully submitted and accepted.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Reports of. Reports of Alderman, Alden Massey.
Thank you. First, I wanna apologize for my outburst, uh, and I, I shouldn't give him any more airtime than it's necessary, but it just bothers me when people throw out things and then just kinda walk out of the room. Most of the stuff he said was just an outright lie, but, uh, I don't think anyone ever, if he, if you go back and look at my comments, I said that I fought hard to get the cameras. I, I was hoping that people like him wouldn't make me sorry of what I did. I never said, and I don't think anyone ever said to anyone that we would ever take the cameras down. Enough, uh, being said for that. Now on some good stuff. Sue, thank you very much for you and the, uh, all the volunteers for the other day. It, it, it looked a little apprehensive in the early morning, uh, when the rain started coming, but, uh, it was really nice, uh, to see so many people get involved and actually had a pretty good time, uh, picking up other people's garbage. Uh, Mrs. Van Fleet, it's always nice seeing you, I haven't seen you in a long time. I hope everything's fine with you. One last thing I have and then I'll move it on. I received a letter from the, uh, Garden Lovers Club and I just wanna announce it because it's actually, uh, this weekend. Dear Mr. Massey, our Garden Lovers Club of Middletown will have a dedication ceremony for Blue Star Memorial byway marker at Thrall Park, uh, in Middletown on May 6th at 1:00 PM. This tribute is made for all armed forces of the United States. So I'm hoping that, uh, we are very proud to be part of this National Garden Club program and would like to invite you to the ceremony. And, uh, I just, I'm, I hope everyone will be able to make it, uh, but it, it's an honor that, uh, all the military will be, uh, honored with this stone. And I know that, uh, we will, uh, take care of all the property in there from this point on. I believe the American Legion, uh, actually, um, monitors all the monuments, they're aware of it, obviously they will be there and, uh, they're on board with this, so I hope to see you all. And I'm also hoping that the weather will hold out for this. Thank you.
Alden Burr?
Um, piggyback off everybody else, uh, Sue, volunteers and all the sponsors, a great pride day and, uh, just keep it going. On the garbage end also is our bulk pickup is gonna be next week. Please, residents, don't put it out until Sunday night. Some have put it out this week and with the wind today, it blew all over the street. And the other ones, like Jerry said and, and the commissioner, they have TVs out, please go get your TV, bring it back. The county does take them, obviously there's a fee. And I think Jacob said we might be doing a, a, a one also, but just bring your garbage, all your TVs back in and leave them off the street. Thank you.
Alderwoman Cassoon?
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to, once again, I, it needs to be said again and again and again, um, a big thank you to Sue De Pue. Um, she is the leader of the force, um, for the citywide cleanup. I'd like to say it was a huge success. We're very nervous, 8:30 in the morning, it's raining, but it didn't stop our volunteers, well over 300 people and the weather didn't stop them, they came out, they worked hard. Some people even came back for repeat assignments, one of them is here today. Um, but it was a great success. Um, the weather cleared up for Sunday, the Little League Parade was a beautiful, beautiful day. Uh, the walk was a lot more cozy, I think, with the parents on Watkins Avenue and waiting at the field as they are every year. It was a great opening day. Um, my thanks to the, to the Little League for inviting us, it's an honor to be a part of that tradition every year, so I thank them. Um, I was able to go to the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast on Sunday, although briefly, 'cause I have a two-year-old, so that lasted like 20 minutes, but it was great, it was, it looked like it was well-attended. Um, the Lions Club members, the ROTC kids, once again, present and volunteering as we see them at all our events and I'm very proud of them. I just like to shout them out because they're, they're always there, you know? Pancake breakfasts, cleanups, Night Out Against Crime, I'll be coming to them soon. Um, they're a wonderful group of kids and all the youth that came out for the cleanup, I just, I think it just speaks to volunteerism comes up again and again. All our successful events come down to volunteers and I just wanna thank all of them for all of the events and the things that we're a part of and Middletown's a great city and I thank everybody for that. Jacob, just a shout out because third ward cleanup is now done and the ward looks fantastic, the guys did a great job. It's a pretty big undertaking, I don't know how they get it done in a week, but they do and they did a great job, so my thanks to them. That's all I have tonight.
Alden Johnson?
Thank you. Kudos to Sue as well. Uh, West Main, we've waited several years and, um, certainly we hope that's gonna come to fruition and we do appreciate, uh, all the efforts that have been extended on, uh, our part and the part of our residents. Uh, number three, the young man at the microphone, I think, um, I speak for all of us, we, we support youth in government, we have youth in government right here at the table. Um, we support free speech. The young man, uh, is perhaps misinformed in some of his facts and is perhaps misguided. It certainly doesn't mean that he should not participate in government. Um, I support the president's, uh, intervention on the part of this council and his representatives and I hope that you will continue to advise him so that he can come back and behave in an appropriate and productive manner. I think that's the goal that we all share. I'm gonna do a PCA for my day job. I had the opportunity about two months ago to attend a veterinary seminar in New Jersey. We talked quite a bit about Lyme disease. And then, uh, last week I was in Massachusetts where we also talked a lot about Lyme disease. If you look at a demographic map of the United States of America, um, right through the Hudson Valley, right through it, Island, Connecticut to Massachusetts, we're the highest incidence of human Lyme disease in the country, except for perhaps Wisconsin and Minnesota. So what is my point? We, I, I heard a lot of very smart people, parasitologists and microbiologists talk about a variety of organisms, I can, aside of ticks. Um, most people listening to me don't know there's what started about four years ago called a One Health Initiative, where veterinary medicine, immunists and tried to partner for zoonotic diseases. Here's the point, uh, the ticks are here to stay. I think it's fair to say that human Lyme disease will become more and more of a threat in this calendar year. We did our deer study a couple of years back, we know we're housing more deer than we would care to and, um, the pets are relatively well-protected, many of them are vaccinated and they have insecticide product on them. The humans are walking around, um, as very appropriate hosts for ticks. So be vigilant, be vigilant with your children in particular and if you are suffering from illness that does not seem to be well-defined, uh, think about the question, could it be something from a tick? That's my PCA. And lastly, I had the opportunity, um, to attend the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Awards Dinner last week. Um, I got to go to do that because our superintendent, Dr. Eastwood, is being recognized as, uh, an educator of the year. Our relationship with the school district has been at times tumultuous and I pretty much know that firsthand. Um, but the point is, we both represent constituencies where we're trying to service their needs, whether it's education or quality of life and all the things that we do. The superintendent was honored, he's been in the district for 13 years and he works in an industry where five to seven is your typical life expectancy. So he's really done, I think, and I think the Mid-Hudson Council agreed. Uh, they talked about his longevity, the, uh, increased, um, graduation rate, the strings program, rates to the top, Chromebooks. Um, there are a lot of good things that are happening and when good things happen in our city, it helps our schools and when good things happen in our schools, it helps our city. And congratulations to Dr. Eastwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Alden Witt?
Thank you very much. Um, I would also like to echo the sentiments of the, uh, citywide cleanup, that was a terrific job, Sue, thank you. Um, it was great to see so many kids out there and I, in speaking, uh, with some of their advisors, they already have it like down on their list for next year of things to do. So hopefully that's our, our base that keeps getting bigger and bigger, but it was a nice day and as Joe and I think Kate said, it was looking a little shady at, uh, quarter to nine when it's kinda pouring and we were all kinda thinking, well, you know, it was a good thought and then people just kept coming and coming and coming and coming and they got into it. So it's, it's, it was a cool city event and I hope people, uh, I even heard from folks who were taking the opportunity to clean their own properties and, around their neighborhoods a little bit and some people didn't even think that they had to come down there, that they could just do it on their own. So, uh, it was, it's a great event and it keeps getting bigger and bigger, um, so that's a good thing. Uh, Little League Parade the next day, I think that it was a really smart decision to get off of Highland Avenue. Um, I think Rosanna Durrell was the person who recommended that, I could be wrong, I remember in the paperwork seeing that. Um, much more intimate on Watkins and it's funny because you're, you don't have to worry about the crowd because the crowd kinda goes with you because you have all these parents that have to go someplace, so they just walk down to Watts Park with everybody and it's, uh, it's, it's a fun day and it was, it was good to see the turnout, for sure. It's, uh, you know, it's, people say it's, it's dying a little bit, but I'll tell you what, you see the kids' faces and it's, it's still positive, it's still positive for kids who do that. Um, so we have our ward meeting, second ward meeting, um, next Monday night, May 8th, here in the common council chambers at 7 o'clock. Um, we, we certainly enjoy, Jerry and I do the give and take that we have with everybody and the discussions, but if people have questions, they can reach out to us ahead of time and we can try to get answers. I think, um, the mayor talked about today, answering questions from both Jerry and myself, commissioner's very good. So, uh, we wanna help you, if we have the answers, we can give it to you ahead of time. So, thank you very much.
Kleiner?
Thank you, President Maricas. Um, apparently we had some kinda cleanup in Middletown. I, um, I really do wanna thank everybody who turned out. It, I mean, it's just terrific to see all these people in their yellow with the Middletown carers on the back and Middletown Pride in the front. And, uh, it, it, if you didn't, uh, pick up a piece of litter and just made that awareness, it's, it's a wonderful thing, but there were many, many bags of garbage, so thanks to everyone who turned out. Um, if you didn't get there and you wanna see some of it, um, John Nunchuk has put some photos up under, uh, go to the website, under photos or photo gallery and you'll find, uh, Middletown Pride Cleanup. And tried to get everybody in, you can't always get them to stop for a picture, but do the best you can. Um, I also wanna thank the people who took part in the March for Science. I mean, it's amazing that you have to march for science. March for knowledge, march for, but, um, that was also, uh, a terrific event later that day and, and, uh, so thank everybody who organized that. The, uh, Little League Parade, God, what a beautiful day that was and, and thanks to the Elks and the Little League and, and it's true, those just kids are so positive, so it's, it's a wonderful thing. I wanna congratulate the mayor on the, uh, signing, uh, papers on the courthouse, um, and for people who know the history of that, that was Joe Di Stefano with a little help from Ben Gilman, but that's the reason we had that building in the first place. It was just, uh, real determination and, and, uh, I hope it's gonna be a very successful project, but, you know, it's a wonderful building for it, so that'll be great. Uh, I also wanna thank the mayor for, um, uh, his explanations on the zoning change tonight and it was quite enlightening, we really hadn't had a lot of time to discuss that, so that's very good. And also for having the roundtable on live music, uh, that Alderman Massey and I hope to have a resolution for the next meeting to define how that's gonna work and allow for at least some music, uh, both for the people, for the businesses who want it and also for the people who'd like to be able to listen to it. And, um, on June 9th will be the next citywide watch, we actually are gonna have citywide watch, I, I mean on May 9th, uh, you know, uh, this coming Tuesday. And, um, and then on June 13th, we're going to have a special citywide watch, the mayor's gonna come to that one and, uh, we'll see if we can talk the police chief into coming, but, um, put that in your plans. Thank you.
Alden Jonathan Francois?
Thank you, good evening, I'll be very brief. Our constituents, 4th constituents, uh, meeting is, is decided, Ms. Six, at 10 o'clock in this chamber. Uh, encourage everyone to come out and finally get a chance to, uh, meet, uh, Alderwoman Sid, she's been taking a lot of note, I think she's, uh, willing to answer all your questions, I think she'll be ready. Uh, Commissioner, uh, thank you for updating us on, uh, Miami's Berg project, thank you very much. And Sue, once again, excellent job and I also wanna thank all the people that came out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sid?
Hello, good evening, I just wanna ask, also, um, thank Ms. De Pue, honestly, that was awesome, what you did. Um, I also wanna say thank you to everyone, honestly, um, for everyone's guidance and helping me actually have my cheat sheets on here, took down notes. Um, thank you guys again for the opportunity. Um, I was a little, no, I wasn't really, I was, um, bothered by the young man that actually went up and spoke up because he is misinformed, he is misguided and, um, it's unfortunate because as much as I would wanna take the time to sit down and speak with him and explain a little bit about it, I feel like, um, maybe because he thinks he's older than me, maybe because people think that because they're older, their knowledge is different, but it's not. Um, so I feel kinda bad about it, but I know that if we come together, we sit him down and we can actually chat and tell him to get more involved instead of just walking out, he doesn't really care about resolutions, he doesn't see what's going on, instead of just claiming corruption and wrongdoing when really good things, great things are happening. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. Many, many years ago, when I was on the council, as an Alderman of Third Ward, myself, Kleiner and Alderman Ray De Pue, we pushed for televised meetings. Other communities were like, why are you doing that? I said, why? Because it's for our seniors, it's for our commuters, most of the fourth ward are commuters and our family members. We start our meetings at 8 o'clock at night, we, kids go to bed early, we, I wanna push it. We, we, we always knock on doors, first thing they say, why can't we have a televised meetings? Well, other communities like, you know, strange people are gonna come out there, they're gonna voice their opinion and they're gonna talk about everything. I can't fight Trump, I can't say, I can't do anything about the EPA, I can do everything about the city of Middletown. And I'll continue to, I met with this gentleman for about two and a half hours, I've given him, um, chances to meet with people, meet with the mayor, meet with myself again and we are gonna continue to push and, you know, I keep saying, for the good of the city, come and dress the council. I can't fight everybody. We can't, we get, we can voice your opinion, come in here, don't attack, don't make it political. Uh, Sue De Pue, the volunteers, thank you, it is getting bigger, it's a great thing for the city of Middletown. I do wanna thank the professional firefighters for putting out a crew and the police department. I, it's great to see our, our, our employees coming out and giving back and also come out there and helping us. It, it was definitely a great, um, show of force when you see the paid firemen and, uh, the police officers. We had one police officer on duty, um, picking up garbage, so that is really, 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 it's the first that I've seen and it's great, it's a great to see the, uh, city of Middletown moving forward. New business.
Have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer 13,595 dollars and 80 cents from the general fund balance to settle a personnel issue.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Alderman Jonathan Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to authorize the mayor to sign an enhanced service agreement, professional services between the city and Hudson Valley Patterns for Progress.
Sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderwoman Cassoon, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to accept an award in the amount of 50,000 dollars given to us by the Department of Homeland Security, State Homeland Security Grant.
Resolución sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderwoman Cassoon, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to accept a donation from the Middletown, uh, Little League in the amount of 1,820 dollars for park improvements.
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassil to accept a donation from the Middletown Little League in the amount of $1,820 for park improvements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassil, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassil?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassil to concur with the mayor's appointments to the Shade Tree Committee.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassil, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassil?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Sid?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassil to authorize the mayor to sign all agreements with the prospective performers for the 2017 Summer Concert Series, Stars and Stripes Event, and the Latino Festival.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Cassil, seconded by Alderman Cassil. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassil?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?